And saying good morning, but anyway, it's good to see you here this afternoon. Thank you all for coming. And I think before we get started, I just want to say a big thank you to each of you for attending today and having an interest in what the future plan for Centenary could look like and being able to offer your input into that. But before we really get started, I'll try to flip the slide here and it's not flipping. Can you flip it for me Kylie? There we go. All right. So our first order of business this afternoon will be our Town Hall meeting regarding the MCCI process that we've been engaged in for about 10 months or so now. But before we really get into the business of the Town Hall meeting, I would really like to have us start with a prayer. So we've been working with our 501 prayer now for, since about April, I believe is the timeframe when this was first developed. And you will find that prayer in your booklet, the bottom of page two. So if you want to turn there, first of all, let's start by praying together our 501 prayer. Oh God of our ancestors, you planted Centenary in the heart of Mankato for a purpose. You led each of us to this time and place. Now God, guide our hearts to live your plan for us. Break through the barriers in us and in our church, so your spirit may flow through us like the river. As we do your work to change lives, may your will thunder forth in our church. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Once again, welcome. And we're going to start off this afternoon by talking about the Missional Church Consultation Initiative, MCCI as we've been calling it. And before we kind of jump into things, I want to just call your attention to this single sheet of paper. Hopefully everybody picked up a copy of that or received a copy of that, because I think it's kind of important for context if we all understand, this is a process that really has been ongoing, as I said earlier, for about 10 months now, starting back a year ago, February, when we first received the invitation from Bishop O to participate in the MCCI process. Shortly after that, an MCCI steering committee was formed and we attended an invitational meeting that was hosted by Bishop O and Sue Nelson Kibbe, who is the, kind of the brainchild behind this Missional Church Consultation Initiative. It grew out of the West Ohio District and now has been moved into and we're utilizing it in the Minnesota Dakotas District as well too. So there are about, I believe, about 60 churches, 80 churches that have participated so far in the MCCI process. And so it's got a track record of churches, congregations that have entered into this process and starting to see real results in terms of the initiatives that they decide to adopt. So going forward again in the milestones, you can just see kind of the different steps that the MCCI process has taken at Centenary since last February. The Administrative Council has been involved. That steering committee that I spoke of earlier has been very involved. One of the things that that steering committee did was help put together this self-study. And this document here is roughly, I think, about 60 pages long. What this really does is it sums up the history of Centenary. It talks about, we answered questions about what we perceive to be our strengths, what we perceive to be our concerns. A lot of the demographic data related to where we sit here at Centenary and our surrounding community, so that we could understand that type of information as well, was compiled and included in this report too. All kinds of financial and other data about our worship attendance and membership and budget and expenditures and all of those things was also included in this document as well. So there was a lot of work that went into this document and this document was then provided to the MCCI committee, the visiting committee, and they used that as kind of background to understand a lot about who Centenary is and what our hopes and dreams and thoughts about our history and our place here in the community. Going forward then, one of the things that I think I should also highlight is, I think it was a week ago Pastor Michelle spoke about having a plan, but prayer accompanies the plan. And the MCCI process is very rooted in prayer. There was a prayer, breakthrough prayer workshop that was conducted back last April. It was out of that workshop that the 501 prayer was developed. And we've been utilizing that prayer ever since to help center our thoughts around the MCCI process. And that will continue, not only with the 501 prayer, but other prayer initiatives as well, as we go forward and discern and consider the MCCI recommendations and prescriptions. I'm going to fast forward now, because there was a lot of things that happened in the interim there, but two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to have the MCCI visitation team here. And for those of you that were able to participate in that weekend, it was really a great weekend, a great opportunity again for interviews and focus groups and an opportunity for us to share with those people that were visiting our congregation about who we are and what do we see as our vision. So now we have arrived at our first Town Hall meeting. And I think Charlie stated it very well this morning, in that the visiting team, what they did is they listened to what we had to say. What we had to say very much was encompassed in that self-study, very much encompassed in the interviews, the focus groups, the sessions that were conducted on Saturday of that MCCI weekend. What they did then is pull that all together and put it into a forum that we could then kind of consider, is this really the future we want to have for Centenary? And again, to paraphrase Charlie a little bit, what we're going to be talking about here today and at the other two meetings, Town Meetings, is whether we wish to go forward with MCCI. There could be and there will be, assuming we go forward, a lot of how are we going to do that? But that's not our task today. The analogy I use is, we're trying to decide whether we're going to go on a trip. We're not determining today how we're going to get there. So I think if we can keep that in mind, that'll help frame our conversation here today. So now, if you just want to turn to page, really page five in your book. Starting off, the visitation team from the MCCI group, they looked at and heard, what are the things that we think, what do we perceive to be the strengths of Centenary? And again, Pastor Michelle spoke a little bit about that this morning, our location, our building. We've pitched our tent here for 160 some years and because of our location, we've been able to do a lot of wonderful things. Our values, our ministry with the hungry and the homeless, strong leadership and membership. And then turning the page, the arts, music, drama and photography. These are the things, these were themes that kept coming up many, many times in conversations with the MCCI team. They also identified themes that came up that were concerns as well. Number one was the lack of systems to welcome guests consistently. I think you've all heard about that during the MCCI process, there were mystery worshippers that for a period of several weeks came to each of our worship services and they provided very detailed feedback to the MCCI team. And from that feedback then, some of these things were identified, both strengths and concerns. But one of the things that jumped out in terms of a concern was a consistent way that we welcome guests here to our congregation. Also, a concern was the volunteer capacity for Holy Grounds. We have a wonderful thing there in Holy Grounds, but how can we sustain it? That's going to be ongoing, the question. And so the volunteer capacity there is something that we need to address as far as a concern. Discipleship, all of us wishing to deepen our faith and how can we go about doing that? What's the mechanism that we can utilize for that? Our inviting of others. I think all of us arrived here at Centenary in one way or another and we received a welcome and we received something that compels us to come back. Compels us to be here on a Sunday morning, compels us to participate in whatever activities the church you participate in. There's something that brought you here and keeps you here. And so how do we make sure that we extend that invitation to others, so others feel that same feeling that they want to be here, they want to be part of what we're doing here? And then a future focus, what is our strategy as we talk about going forward for Centenary? What do we need to bring together? Because at this point in time, there is not a clear strategy that brings together all of the different elements of what we might wish or hope to be in the future. So that was a concern, that there is not a strategic focus at this point in time. So with all of that laid out and all of those conversations, now we really turn to the prescriptions. And I just want to mention again, as we go forward, our task today is just to talk about whether we wish to adopt these prescriptions. If we do adopt the prescriptions, then there will be assistance offered to us in the form of coaching that'll be ongoing for up the next couple of years. So whether it's a clergy, whether it's a layperson that has expertise in a certain area of our prescription, they will be side by side with us and available to help guide us, help offer suggestions, help move us forward successfully within that prescription. If we decide as a congregation that we do not want to adopt the MCCI prescriptions, and that is certainly our choice, then that coaching, that assistance is not there for us. That doesn't mean we couldn't try to move forward on these things on our own, we could. But that assistance would not be there to help coach us and move us along. So I've done a lot of talking to begin with here, so I want to just take some time a little bit with each of the prescriptions. Our task again today, is there something that you want to understand better about a prescription? You know, what does that mean? Can't say that I know any more than what's on the printed page here, but I think that might give us a good opportunity to discuss. So if there's something there that you want to know more about, let's talk about that. And we'll just kind of go through each of these individually as we move through the meeting here. So the first one is extravagant welcome. And I think at the end of that first paragraph, it says, "To effectively communicate with new visitors, welcome them and assimilate them into congregational life." And a number of things are related to the, how that could happen and some timelines that would help move us along in that process. So any questions or thoughts as it relates to that first prescription, putting ministry in the hands of the people, our extravagant welcome? And I think just in order to make sure that we, everybody can be heard, if you do have a question or a comment, just let me know and I'll bring the mic around so that everybody can hear. Anybody have a question or a comment about our extravagant welcome? Man, you're an easy group. Yes, Bruce?
Well, I know in the past, we've had difficulty getting couples or pairs to be at both doors that kind of involves poor people, I guess, to volunteer to be the welcoming group. But maybe that would be helped if we did some training for the welcoming people. Okay, here's, here's the kind of thing we'd like you to do, so we all know what is expected of us and we have uniformity and consistency from service to service.
Agreed. And I think that really is, is one of the things that was pointed out here as well too, is how do we develop that consistency? What's the type of training that we could provide so that, you know, whether it's the people officially charged with standing at the doors and offering welcome, all of us feel that, that same way and can offer that extravagant welcome. It's, it's one thing, I think, to have the official people do the greeting, but it's another thing if somebody sitting next to you in worship can reach over and say, hey, I'm really glad to see you're here. Other questions or comments about extravagant welcome? Okay, we'll move on to prescription number two, which is Holy Grounds. And so really, I think the bold words there near the beginning, where it just says deepen and grow its impact, are really the keys related to Holy Grounds. Wonderful things are happening here at Holy Grounds, which started with a very simple concept of just reaching out to our neighbors and so on. So this prescription really is, what are we going to do to even maximize that, that impact? So.
Doug, it's more related, as we all turn the page here, the top paragraph is actually the last part of the first prescription.
Correct.
So that, as everybody reads that, so again, if I've understood this, is that if we agree to these prescriptions, when it comes to the kitchen common area updating, coaching will occur with that, so we have a process to make that happen.
Correct, yeah. So that is part of that first prescription and that's, that's one of the suggestions and recommendations there, is that as, as part of our extravagant welcome, we do some enhancements physically to the space that is utilized by all of us. I mean, it's, it's our gathering space. We, many of us were just there for our, our potluck and that sort of thing. But it also certainly impacts the second prescription, having to do with Holy Grounds as well too, because that is the meeting spot for, for most of our Holy Grounds community and so on. So, yes?
I think that the coach is for the extravagant welcome team, but not for the kitchen commons
Thoughts on Holy Grounds?
I hope that when we do this, that we make it very important for people to learn people's names. It is hard. I mean, they come in here, I see them, some of them, every week and I still have a hard time with names. But they really appreciate when you say, oh, hi Jim, glad you're here.
Very good point. And that I think maybe goes back a little bit too, to the training and just being diligent about it. I probably forget 50% of the time to put my name tag on, but boy, it makes a big difference, you know, when you're greeting people and so on. Jim?
I just noticed the terminology that you already mentioned, creating breakfast church. I was at a meeting this week where a Catholic nun from the other side of town said, oh, you're the breakfast church.
Yeah, I think, you know, that maybe started as sort of an informal thing or a comment by, by some of our community and so on, but I think, you know, that's how we're looked at. We're the breakfast church and that's, that's cool, you know? So. Marjorie?
I just want to underscore something that may not be very visible, but I really want to thank Pastor Erica for setting it up, that there's a prayer ministry of people to pray for the concerns of Holy Grounds. And I think that needs to be even enhanced, because that's, I think, part of that spiritual issue, is that this isn't just a place to eat food, it's a place to be spiritually upheld and a lot of people are having serious struggles for which intercessory prayer is very important.
Yes, and, and that is addressed as well. Thank you for highlighting that, that kind of towards the second bullet, bottom, the second bullet point there, it talks about to address spiritual hunger as well as physical hunger within the Holy Grounds ministry. So that certainly could be a component of this, yes.
Well, I'm there every day and what, one of the things that I know with Holy Grounds is that it has a lot of unintended positive consequences. I guess I don't know if that's the right word, but, go back to my behavioral training stuff. It's not just our guests that are getting something out of this. Every single person that I've had come in and volunteered has come out with something, whether it's something different, in their attitude or their understanding or just deepening their sense of community in this town. So it has that benefit to it. It also has, yeah, unintended benefits that, that we were talking about it the other night. We have little kids who are coming in right now, but this is their experience with church. Their experience isn't having to go and sit through something they don't understand. Their experiences with church are, I'm going to go in, they're going to feed me, they're going to take care of me, they love me, they know my name and I'm important to them. That's an unintended benefit of Holy Grounds. People coming in and finding a community that they wouldn't normally have is an unintended benefit. The capacity to deepen and grow its impact is pretty well limitless. It's wherever your mind stops working is about the end of things. Realistically, if you have thoughts or ideas, it's, it's just something that could go wherever the church wants to take it. And having some coaching in there and having maybe somebody to help contain some of our craziness every now and then would be great, but I mean, as far as I can see, this is, this is a really good opportunity.
Thanks Jamie. And I think maybe to your first point as well, if you haven't noticed it on the cover here, this, this photograph of Bruce and Bruce, right? Yeah, I think that's, that's a great picture and that, that I think speaks a little bit to what you were talking about there. It's, it's maybe not just those being served, but those that are also serving and what they get out of it as well too. So thank you. Other comments about Holy Grounds and the prescription related to Holy Grounds? Okay, well, let's move on to the third prescription then, which is going deeper. And by itself, you, you know, going deeper, what does that mean? So I'm just going to read just a little bit more about this. "In the spring and again in the fall for the next two years, Pastor Michelle will select a book or resource that she believes will challenge and encourage the spiritual growth of the congregation. The book chosen each time will be used for a four to six week churchwide study and will be used by every existing class and small group by the youth ministry and specially adapted for use in the children's ministry. And opportunities then for new short-term small study groups led by church council members will also be offered and so on. The goal being that at least 80% of the congregation participates." And then also tying in with that would be a sermon series and continuing to grow our prayer initiative, which is rooted and started with the 501 prayer. So it's really about going deeper in our faith and our exploration of theology and, and the things that I think we identified and the MCCI team also identified as one of the strengths of Centenary is our willingness to question, our willingness to search and discuss. And we may have diverse opinions, but at the same time, we respect each other and we engage and enjoy engaging in that type of conversation. So that's what going deeper is really about. So any questions or thoughts about that particular prescription? I got a thumbs up, so that's good, you know? Okay. Our fourth prescription is, "Putting Ministry in the Hands of the People Through Spirituality, Justice and the Arts." So if you look through the bullet points and so on there, again, growing in spirituality, justice has long been a focus of Centenary in many different ways here. Number of the things that are talked about here is putting together a series of events and being very purposeful in terms of how we invite the community at large to participate in things and very purposeful about inviting them back for the next event and back for the next event and that sort of thing. So maybe they have the opportunity to experience Centenary in many, many different ways, whether it is through the arts, whether it is through other events that we might host here at Centenary. And getting them the opportunity, I think, again, as Jamie just said as well too, maybe their first and only experience isn't just worship. We certainly want them in worship if that's where they want to be, but there's so many other things that we offer here as well. So how can we engage the community that way and use that as an entry point to help grow Centenary and get more people engaged and interested in what we do? So that's really what this is about, focus on our justice ministry, utilization of the arts and other events to help grow our outreach into the community. So comments on that particular prescription?
It's like if you go to the cities and go to a play once, you keep getting their stuff in the mail. So that sort of thing.
There you go.
If they come to one, get their information and keep sending them information.
That's right. Well, I think there's something on the prescriptions about social media and things like that too. So you get on our email list, boy.
And no one subscribes.
There's a, there's another factor in this too, that I've been getting some training in from Sue and she calls it the triad piece. And it's the idea of, say, we have the play, The Proof, The Proof.
Proof.
In March, which is about mental illness. What if we had a discussion group about mental illness in, in the weeks afterwards that we invited people back for? And then if there was, happened to be something in a sermon series that connected to it that we could invite them to after that? So it's that kind of a, it's a three-point invitation system where you have, or like for our Night to Unite, we had one event and it was a standalone, but if you have one event, gave people tickets to come to dinner on Wednesday and then invite them to come to a book study after that. So it's that kind of a thing, which takes a lot more work and planning, but that's, that's the invitation part.
Thank you. Another conversation around that fourth prescription. All right, the last prescription is future focus. And really, I think goes back to the last concern that was articulated, that at this point in time, we really don't have sort of a strategic plan for the future. And so by entering into this prescription, that helps us arrive at a plan, helps us, give us a direction. There's a lot of things, again, encompassed in the prescriptions and the conversations that we've been having, that we all, I think, can pretty much agree on, this is something we want to do, but we didn't have a real focus. And that's really what this last prescription is about, is giving us that opportunity to have strategic preparation for the future. And some of that may have to do with facilities and properties and parking, some upgrades to some of our other space. There's discussion in here about maybe a need for a potential capital campaign. Again, that, that's getting into more of the, you know, how we would do some of these things, which we're not going to talk about today, but I think it's also important to just highlight that that type of conversation, should we adopt these prescriptions, would be going forward. So staffing is another part of that, is so it's not just physical needs, it's what do we need staffing wise to make sure we can continue to offer the ministries in an effective way that we wish to offer here? And also, how can we integrate with our community, our city center community? Again, Pastor Michelle talked about this morning, our proximity here and, and how we're sort of in the middle of so many things. We really are the city center when it comes to a faith community that can then draw in all of these other things, whether it is the arts or whether it is, you know, just our proximity to the river and people that work nearby or people that live nearby and those kinds of things. So how do we integrate and work more effectively with that whole group as well too? So that's really that fifth prescription, which is, you know, a strategic focus in adopting that. So questions or comments related to that?
This one, just that I was wondering with the coaches, I guess my hope would be if we're planning to expand out into the community and integrate ourselves even more and have an impact, that it goes forward with the do no harm, because we have a potential to be a very positive influence in this community and in this area. Or we could bulldoze through it and come out on the other end not looking so great.
Can you just, so we all understand what you're referring to, just give us a quick explanation of do no harm?
My most specific reference would be that if we were to look at marketing and expanding, the potential to destroy some of the few affordable units in this area could happen, that we would be looking at how we would remedy that before we would just...
Okay.
So, you know, that specifically, that's what I'm kind of thinking.
I guess I just have kind of a comment to the overarching. From my perspective, as I looked at these prescriptions, what I saw, what stood out to me was the word "systems." And working in healthcare, the healthcare industry has discovered that there are certain, for certain treatments or certain diseases, there are best practices and there are certain systems that need to be in place, so that you kind of eliminate the human error of that. And so, for instance, if you have a heart attack, there's a certain list of things that need to happen within a certain amount of time with certain interventions to get the most successful outcome. And as I look through these prescriptions, what I see is that word "systems," again, that what we've got the opportunity to build through this is not, these aren't ideas that we didn't already have. What we really stand to gain here is a structure, a safety net, so to speak, of how we can make all of these things happen consistently without having to worry if we're forgetting something, if we don't have the right interventions, just to be sure that every time we do something, we, we do it in the right order and all the steps are there. So what I see, the biggest benefit, and particularly with the future focus, this isn't just, doesn't have to be just a one-time plan. What we learned on the weekend that... What we learned on the weekend that the MCCI people were here is actually a process. How can you tell when it's time to start looking at a future plan again? And it's when administration gets in the driver's seat and things start stalling out. So we've got, again, we've got a structure for, this isn't a one-time thing, this is a how can we make it last, really last? And anytime we need a revamp on a future focus, or anytime we need to add to our system, we can. So that's what I really like about these prescriptions.
Thank you. Other thoughts or comments, whether on that last prescription, or just generally that you'd like to share about the MCCI prescriptions, the process?
Could you just briefly talk about the coaches, just so everyone understands where they might be coming from, who they might be, in what way they'll interact with us?
And I'd say that, that is not known specifically at this point in time, but Pastor Michelle has been engaged in coaching herself, or with coaches already, for the last about six months or so. And so maybe she has a perspective a little bit on who the coaches could be, and what their expertise might be, and so on.
My understanding of the coaches is that they are all a clergy person who has already accomplished the thing that we're being asked to do, and has been successful at it. And so they would bring in the one that was right for us. It may be someone from another conference, it may be someone locally. So they would, likely, they usually come onsite at least once, and if they're from a different conference, then would meet via Skype, or, you know, work with us that way afterwards, for, I think, up to two years. And if it's someone locally, then, then they may be onsite more often. So, but there's a, you know, I think Sue just has a whole cadre of people that she's worked with who have successfully done something. So it's somebody who's recently done what we're being asked to do, is my understanding. And all of that part is then paid for by the bishop.
For those of you that were here on the MCCI Weekend Worship Service and everything, Reverend Elizabeth McCauley, who's the lead pastor over at Rochester, she gave the sermon, but her church just went through the MCCI process within the last year or so as well, too. And so it's that type of expertise that we would be bringing in, people that have had experience going through MCCI, have been able to implement prescriptions, know how it's worked, what have been the successes, what have been the pitfalls, those kinds of things, and be able to help guide us and coach us through that. Other questions, comments, thoughts? All right, well, thank you very much for that. I just want to call your attention to, you know, you leave here today and you go, "Darn it, I should have asked that question." Well, there'll be two more formal town hall meetings, opportunities for you to ask those questions, or to, you know, offer a comment, or whatever related to the MCCI process. The first one will be Wednesday, February 8th, at 6:30 PM, and Carla Frederick will be leading that town hall meeting. And then the third one will be Thursday, February 9th, at 7:00 PM, and Joe Farnham will be leading that town hall meeting. Yes, Bruce?
Before you wind up, Doug, I want to backtrack a little bit, and there was a Sunday last fall, when Pastor Michelle said, "I'm going to have leaders of the church stand up on either side of the sanctuary, and if you have something that's been troubling you or bothering you, you have an opportunity to go to them and to have them help you, or have a personal prayer." That was personally very meaningful to me, I thought that was really a nice and inspiring thing to do. And I'm speaking of ignorance now, because this might already been taking place, but if I wonder if something like that in our Going Deeper section could be offered to Holy Grounds?
You want to speak to that, just to...
Yeah, I can say that we are doing that every morning. I probably spend a good half hour to 45 minutes in prayer with individuals on most mornings at Holy Grounds. So, yeah, that's what is happening, but I was using more bodies.
Any other comments or questions from anyone? So again, this whole process will culminate when we gather back here on Sunday, February 19th, and the district superintendent, Fred Van der Werf, will lead us, and it will be a very brief meeting, because we'll have one question before us. Do we wish to adopt the five prescriptions as they stand, or do we not? And we just will need to answer that question, it'll be a paper ballot, and so it'll be a relatively quick process. But I, again, want to thank all of you for your interest in what MCCI is about, and these prescriptions, and your attendance here today. And so with that, I'd like to close this segment of our meeting with a short prayer. We'll take about a minute or two pause to just reset a couple of things, and then we will open our all-church conference and, and talk through the, the rest of the book that you have in front of you. So if you all just bow your heads with me for a moment. Thank you, Lord, for giving us individuals within this church who, for years and years and years, have looked for how we can reach out and be meaningful in this community, how we can be a leader, how we can deepen our impact for others, and at the same time feel that impact ourselves. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity that lies before us. Give us your wisdom to help us understand your will, and how we can carry that forward in our church community. Lord be with us as we pray going forward. Amen. We'll take about two minutes, and then we'll be back with our, rest of our meeting. Thank you.